Welcome to the September 25th, 2017, meeting of the Marquette City Commission. I'd like to call this meeting order. Would you please rise with me and say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, if we could have the roll call, please.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Cam Benzey?
Here.
Commissioner Conley?
Here.
Commissioner Frazier?
Here.
Commissioner Plord?
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Baldini?
Here.
And Mayor Campana?
Here. Next, we need approval of the agenda. Do we have Mayor Pro Tem Baldini?
Chairman, Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the agenda with the, I'd like to move, item 5L under the consent agenda to new business item. And I can explain why, if anyone's interested.
We'll discuss it later. Okay, we will do that. 5L will be-
5L to new business item.
It will be new business item, number 13, wastewater treatment plant emergency, digester cleaning. Now, do we have a motion to approve the agenda as changed?
I've moved it.
Is there a second? Commissioner Frazier?
I approve the agenda as amended.
All those in favor, please say yes.
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 Opposed? That carries 7-0. Announcements. I just have one quick announcement. Our next meeting is not on a Monday, but due because it's a legal holiday, it'll be on Tuesday, October 10th. Put that in your memory bank. Next, we come to boards and committees. Tonight, we're going to welcome two new members to some committees. If I could meet Dax Richard at the podium to my right, and James Suksi. Right here. Getting a fire going. Thank you. Thank you. Dax Richard and James Suksi have agreed to be, to volunteer and work on the Land Development Code Advisory Committee. This is a committee that's an ad hoc committee for one year that's going to work on our zoning and ordinance, zoning and codes ordinances, and see if we can improve them. We appreciate them doing this. We're going to, I'm going to give them each the official Marquette pin.
Thank you.
There you go. There you go. You know, wear that proudly. It identifies you as a volunteer who's helping to make Marquette a better place, and we thank you again for, the city thanks you for stepping up and doing this. And again, I thank you. We're going to have you take the oath now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, City Clerk?
Mr. Suksi, I think you already took yours in the office. Mr. Richard, this is just yours. You just want to raise your right hand and read it out loud.
Okay. Hi, Dax Richard. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and the Charter of the City of Marquette, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office and the Land Development Code Advisory Committee of the City of Marquette according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Sign that one.
Sure.
And that's that. I'll take this.
Thanks.
Very good. Thank you.
Two, we have Lisa Kotler. Is Lisa here? I do not believe she's going to make it tonight. And Jake Feather. Jake, could you come up here, please? Jake, Jake has served as chairman on the Traffic Parking Advisory Committee for, how many years? You've been on the committee for-
Maybe four.
Four. I knew it was a good number of years. We'd like to thank Jake for all the work he's done for the city. I mean, that's a long commitment and actually a very important committee, and the fact that you're chairman says you're involved, and we do appreciate that. As a going away gift, we'd like to give you the official Marquette tee shirt. It's a dress up tee shirt. Show it to everybody. We'd also like to present Jake with a certificate of appreciation for volunteer effort on Traffic Parking Advisory Committee. Thank you for your hard work and dedication serving the citizens of this committee. Thank you very much, and hopefully we'll get you back sometime.
All right.
All right, Jake. Thank you very much for all you've done. Tonight, we have two presentations. The first presentation is UP Children's Museum Guardian of the Quarter. We have two students. That would be Tyree Dwight and Erin Moe. If you could both come up here, please. With their parents, if you so desire. With anybody, if you so desire. You want to stand right, come on right over here. Got to get in the camera. Tyree and Erin are two outstanding students who volunteer at the UP Children's Museum. They're very valuable to the workings of the museum. Without them, it would not be as good there. Again, two hardworking individuals. Mr. Jim Edwards, the director at the museum, will gladly tell you some more items. Both these two.
Promotion.
Promotion. Who's the director?
Oh, he promoted.
That's okay.
Soon to be.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that promotion. It's been a busy summer at the Children's Museum with over 70 different youngsters volunteering there since we got out of school. We had nominated a young lady who is not eligible. She lives in Baraga, and so I just cooked her her dinner and she left. We had a remarkable dinner of her choosing in the museum kitchen, and I had asked City Hall if, once, this is the first time in 17 years, we could, actually second time, the two sisters, we could nominate two youngsters here for guardian of the quarter. I want to deal with Tyree first. That picture will stay there on its own. You come up here. That's why we're not an art gallery. I challenged the youngsters who joined us at the end of the school year and became new guardians that one of them would be guardian of the quarter. And Tyree is Mr. Model Train Set. Tyree has run things on his own. He's grown during the summer. He's come in Monday, Wednesday, and Friday every week. He would have come in every day, I think, of each week, but I limit them to three days a week and three hour shifts. And I commend him for stickability, for dealing with our adults who volunteer and run the museum and putting up with them, and then slowly but surely taking over and running a program on his own. So I was very proud in that darkened room where the caboose lit up, and there he was, putting an old Lionel train set together that a city commissioner once gave us, to make children safe and to lead a good program. So Tyree, thank you. Well done, and we'll get to you in a minute. But then, then, young Erin. If Tyree is Mr. Model Train Set, this is known as the Springsteen. This is the boss. And Erin, we've known for nearly four years rather than four months. So I've been delighted to see Erin's voice change. She's nearly getting tall to me now. And Erin will just turn up at the museum and change the nature of it, and suddenly it's a busy place. Suddenly, it's a noisy, busy place, and things need to happen, don't they? And she's very talkative. Aren't you?
Sometimes.
Yes. So these are our two guardians of the quarter. Thank you.
Hold on. Yeah. 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 How did you do that?
Well, on behalf of the city, we are proud of you, and we'd like to present these two leadership awards to you. I will hold it up so that you can see it. It's the Youth Leadership Award presented to Erin and Tyree as UP Children's Museum Outstanding Guardian of the Quarter. So Erin, oh, I, before you take off, I've got to sign that. And Tyree, I'm going to shake your hand. Thank you for this. One more thing. As always, the chairman, who is Commissioner Sarah Reynolds of our sweetness committee, spent hours making these little treats for you. They're the same. Enjoy them now before your parents take them away from you, but that's an appreciation for what you've done. And again, we thank you very much. We heard you're good students, you're leaders, and you continue to do well in school, and we look forward to many good things from you. So, thank you. Would you care to say anything to the people out here, just to thank you? Or if not, just say a thank you. Say thank you. Look forward to doing this.
Thank you for giving me this honor to volunteer at the Children's Museum, and I hope one day that the future generation will get further education outside of school. Thank you.
Very good. Very good. Erin, anything?
I just want to say thank you for helping me through Mr. Jim and Bryn. And I just love going to Children's Museum because I love going there to help and teach kids about the animals, and yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Erin, this is yours.
Thank you.
It's official. Thank you. Jim, thank you very much. We have Leslie Hartman here. Leslie will take care of this for us, if you would. Leslie?
Absolutely.
You have Ray Johnson with you.
Thank you. Good evening. Wanted to provide the commission and the community an update on the Local Development Finance Authority, which we oversee the Smart Zone. So we have Ray here this evening to give an in-depth presentation, but this past year has been very busy with community outreach, building community awareness, collaboration with the university and other entities in Marquette. So without further ado, I'll invite Ray. I know we're on a time crunch, so we want to leave time for any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Leslie asked that I talk a little bit about a major program that we've embarked on. We talked about this about a year and a half ago, and it's finally come to fruition. And so this past June, the Michigan Strategic Fund Board approved a grant award to NMU to put together in a collaboration, Invented NMU, the program that's been operational for about three years, and the Marquette Smart Zone. And they awarded the university $1.15 million over a three-year period to fund the ongoing operations of this. And the state grant supports this collaboration that I'll talk a little bit more about here in the next couple of slides. If you recall, Invented NMU is a program under the university where student teams work with community members, faculty, students, and others that have ideas, and they're able to take those ideas and help assess the market, assess the opportunity, and look at the potential for launching that particular idea into the marketplace. And it's run by students. It's led by a team, a staff, and to date, there's been over about 298 different ideas that have walked through that door. And we wanted to continue to operate that program. It had been fully funded by the university for the past three years. The state was very interested in continuing the operation, and they saw an opportunity to combine the capabilities of the Smart Zone and the capabilities of Invented NMU and create a one-stop shop in an entity that we now operate. If you look at the focus of Invented NMU, it's been really around this workforce development and student experiential learning, working with actual projects in the marketplace. So not only are we helping community members and entrepreneurs and startups and inventors, but we're also helping students learn about the real world of bringing products to market and helping small businesses and tech businesses launch their organizations. So it's really been a windfall from that aspect as well. I'll talk just briefly about the grant itself. As I mentioned, it's 1.12 million over a three-year period. It started in July, this past July, a cost reimbursable grant type. And what that means is you get the money when you spend the money. You get reimbursed for activities and funds that you've spent to a plan that was part of the contract. NMU is the grant fiduciary, so they book the dollars, and they provide a significant in-kind contribution to the program, both all the facilities and maintenance and other support around the program. The Smart Zone is now under a sub-agreement. Think of it as a management contract to run the NMU program. And so we run the program, we run the facility, and NMU continues to have the program within its corridors. The grant funds are there to support the NMU staff, there's one staff member, and the part-time students. We have 10 part-time students now working at Invented NMU. A portion and a percentage of the Smart Zone staff managing the program are funded by the grant funds and some of the operational expenses. So you can look at this as a three-year funding opportunity to continue the program and launch and help support entrepreneurs, startup, inventors, and other small businesses. The funds are provided by the Michigan Economic Development Corporation based on meeting agreed-to metrics. And so under the contract, we have metrics to meet. I'll talk about that in just a second. The first metric reporting period is coming up soon, October 15th, and then every six months thereafter. So from a contractual standpoint, the metrics that we're focused on is getting initial client engagement, what we call a quick explore. So if you have an idea, you walk in the door, and our team will take a look at your idea, do some initial digging through the marketplace, and really come up with a quick assessment of, is this idea viable? Is there a, are there competitors already? Can you find it on Google now for $6.50? Is there a patent already out there that you may be in violation of? And so this is a quick way to assess an opportunity without a inventor or a startup entrepreneur spending a whole lot of money. From there, we take companies and individual clients that want to go take a next step. When we say, yes, we think your idea has some legs, there's an opportunity, then they would pay for services that are provided. Right now, the fee structure is about $30 an hour. We're considering raising the price because we think it's a great value. But then, this is a plan that would be laid out with the inventor and with the entrepreneur on a variety of different aspects that they would look for and need to help launch their idea and help launch their product. The other thing that we're going to report on, any new companies that are created by these clients that bring in ideas. And then, of course, job creation. Are there full-time jobs being created under this program and under the support that is provided? And then, are there any follow-on funding that is received by that inventor, by that startup, including owner investment? We have, most of the folks that walk in these days are self-funding, are self-funding all of these activities. And then we have an obligation to create some entrepreneurial events that we'll host to help entrepreneurs on a variety of topics that are of interest to them. Just near-term focus, I think the biggest change we have now is that the Smart Zone is now co-locating in the Invented NMU facility that's on the corner of Prescott and Fair there. There's a bunch of construction. Mike, as you promised, it would be done by November, I think.
That was next November.
Next November, yeah. It's going to be an awesome entrance. It will be, actually, the way it's coming around, the roundabout, we're going to have, Dr. Erickson has commissioned to put a sign right near or in the middle of that roundabout that will point people to the university and to Invented NMU. I think it's a great location. It's going to be a lot of traffic there. So creating this one-stop shop for inventors and entrepreneurs is really a unique thing in our community. And then, another important part is to embark on what I'm calling a customer acquisition strategy, which is to increase what we call more deal flow. Since we are a fee-for-service organization, a client that comes in ultimately pays for the services that they get. And so we want to be able to accelerate and increase our capabilities of bringing new clients in through messaging, marketing, and a promotional plan and strategy. And I think what you'll start to see in the marketplace is this kind of messaging, that this is the right team to help launch your idea, whether you have a Smart Zone-like high-tech idea or a physical product idea, either way, when you walk in the door, we have a team that can help you, and the first meeting is always free. And we've started to advertise that on word on the street. So I hope if you look and are signed up for that blog, you'll see our ad in the lower right-hand corner, to start to generate additional interest in the community, to come to raise their hand and say, I have an idea, I'm looking for some assistance. We also are, just started a new event series we call Entrepreneurs Unplugged, which is an event where entrepreneurs that have gone through our program and have gone through the assistance tell their story. We started our first one with Kathy Hahn, who invented a sale, a downwind sale for stand-up paddleboard users. She came to Marquette. Her daughter is an NMU student. We had our first Entrepreneurs Unplugged event at the Pifah Rock Wall, where we were focused on outdoor recreational enthusiasts. We had a good crowd there that were interested in hearing Kathy's story on how she launched her stand-up paddleboard downwind sail. She's starting to sell this in, through channels like Downwind Sports, and the support from Invented NMU and the Smart Zone were around market assessment, competitive assessment, the target market definition. It was actually turned out to be women and children, where tend to be the more appropriate market for her. Sales channel identification, manufacturing sources here in the state of Michigan, a patent strategy. She's now filed a patent on her idea. And also business connections and networking within the community, looking for business partners, and ultimately investors. And so you can see, these are the kinds of services and support that we can provide almost any inventor, innovator, or small business startup. And then, at the end of that particular messaging, we want people to raise their hand, to bring your idea, whether it be a product, a service, or an app. If you're a student, there's funding available through NMU for students. If not, it's below-market expense, and for less than, less than $1,000, you can get a whole lot of work done by a team of students that are bright and eager and managed by a group of professional staff. So our one-stop-shop concept has come to fruition. It's taken about a year and a half from concept to final funding, and we look to supporting the community and the campus in a more robust way and allowing both tech-based and non-tech-based businesses and ideas flourish within the community. So I'll stop there and take any questions you might have.
Thank you. Commissioners? I've got a question. How does this affect your relationship with the Smart Zone in Houghton?
You know, we have a, we have a good relationship with Houghton. I had spent about 20% of my time supporting and helping some of the tech entrepreneurs that came out of Michigan, the Michigan Tech Smart Zone. I think probably in reality, my time will be dwindling down from that, and it'll be focused here more exclusively on Marquette and the city of Marquette, and the Invented NMU, and the campus and the university here.
Okay. Thank you. Well, thank you very much. We appreciate you coming tonight, and it just seems like this is a good opportunity for the city.
It's a great opportunity.
I think good things can happen.
Yeah. You know, it's important to note that the university funded for the first three years, self-funded this entire program, Invented NMU, and got it to the point where it is, where the state had said, this is something important, we're going to put our money into it, and we want the Smart Zone to help and collaborate. So it's been, it's been a great opportunity for all of us.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next we come to our first public comment of the evening. Public comments when residents can address the commission, or they may reserve time to speak on one of the business items coming up later on the agenda. I'm going to open public comment. You've got three minutes to speak. We need your name, local address, city or township. Does anybody wish to address the commission at this point? Up front, please.
You're up there?
Please, thank you.
Hi, I'm Karen Hendricks, 355 East Ridge, and I just wanted to inform-
Marquette, right?
Yes, Marquette, Michigan. I wanted to tell the commissioners that I have had the privilege for the last year of serving as the chair for the Public Arts Task Force, and we are all here tonight and would, can answer any of the questions that you may have as far as that, as public art, the policy goes.
Thank you. If questions come up later, we will ask you to come up again. Thank you. Anyone else?
Matt Luttenberger, 1406 Garfield Ave., here in Marquette, Michigan. I'd like to speak in number six in the future, but for right now, I'd like to bring up an observation that I've had since we changed times for the meeting. At 6 o'clock, it seems difficult for people to get here because I've noticed a 75% decrease in time allocated, just actual number of speakers coming up, or the time we're speaking on the public comments or on subjects. So 75% decrease in that time and a 90% decrease in variety of speakers. So just keep that in mind. If you thought we were going to have more people speaking, we are actually physically or statistically not having that. So that's something to keep in mind if you're, if you're looking for input from the community on these projects. And in that note, I had the pleasure of, last week, speaking in California about bringing technologies that are going to foster human civilization on Mars in a way to create solutions here on Earth. That was my September 11th flight back home from that, and when I, when I listened to the speech or comments that you guys had here on the Monday 11th meeting, Mr. Frazier, you pointed something out, and I don't mean to make this a light point. This is very, very, very serious, and I'm really curious how we go forward with it. Mr. Frazier, you pointed out to a former mayor on the record that you wondered if he got kickbacks for the natural gas power plants that are going into town. While that may seem like a joke, and you might not get a kickback from Winsala, there is a lot of local funding that does take place. The local funding is available to, in municipal bonds especially, get a very quick and easy background cash flow. So it is very possible that we might have a 35% rate increase for our electricity rates based on former mayors deciding that we need to have a new electrical power plant. This ME-DC conversation just happened. That seems like a perfect solution for some of the things that we were hiring Johnson Controls for. So I don't know where we go forward if a sitting commissioner is accusing a former mayor who is now a sitting board of light and power- mayor, who is now a sitting Board of Light and Power Commissioner, of getting kickbacks, of illegally profiting on-
Excuse me, excuse me.
Speaker is accusing one of the commissioners of-
May I?
Accusing or committing a crime?
May I?
I would have to agree with Commissioner Plard on this point.
I am repeating what Mr. Fraser, your fellow commissioner said.
Hold, 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 one at a time, one at a time.
I am repeating what Mr. Fraser said to the former mayor at this meeting last week.
Fine, but don't accuse him of-
Your Honor?
Commissioner Plard, yes.
Commissioner Fraser did not accuse anyone of committing any crime, taking any kickbacks under any circumstances whatsoever.
I'm sorry, but I have a note here. I took notes on that. Actually, let me find the right page.
Tell you what, we don't need to-
Nonetheless, I-
Just proceed.
There is a-
Do not refer to that.
There is an ongoing concern then that we are paying a lot more for electricity than we need to because of former elected officials taking advantage of their positions. And I'm curious how we as a city go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Plard. Anyone else?
James Gallant, Marquette County Suicide Prevention Coalition, 538 Yelm Road, Scandia. And as I was here last time, I requested that you folks would look into your efforts of the city of Marquette in the planning of suicide prevention with the Marquette County Suicide Prevention Alliance. And as I heard, you've inquired but not actually received any answers on that, so I would ask you to please come together and officially request from the city manager and your administration a report concerning the city's efforts on suicide prevention, including a copy of the actual county suicide prevention plan. In the minutes of the alliance, they say there's a plan, it's said it's been approved, but in two years of asking for that, I haven't been able to actually get my hands on it so I could read it and see what was actually approved. And to get the minutes of the Suicide Prevention Alliance, which will show your members, and actually the current members. I've noticed that sometime, I think last year, that they published the minutes, but they don't list the members anymore of who's actually at the meeting. It's just a little note, and it's about that big right there. It says we had a meeting. Except for, I just found out today, we had another tragic event, Marquette County, suicide, young person. Not good. But the problem is that the city of Marquette has participated, and I'm not sure if you appointed this member, your members, because there's been several. I've been to some of these meetings, and people come and go, and they say, "I work at the city," so therefore they represent the city, and Duke Lightpoint Hospital and Great Lakes Recovery Center. You don't really know if these people are actually appointed. Actually, the guy from Northern Michigan University, he said he works there. That's why he's there, and representing the university, and which nobody on the board knew that. And they didn't get appointed by the president or anything of the university to speak on their behalf, to vote on their behalf. And to get the future plans on updating this plan, because a Sandra McGovern from Duke Lightpoint Hospital representative stated at the board meeting when they approved the introduction of this in 2013, said, I remember Greg Sempen, said, "As a veteran," he saw that there was nothing in the plan about veterans, and 22 veterans die every day by suicide, they say. And so she said, "Well, yes, it's not in there, but we plan on, you know, including something, and working on that and putting that in later." You know, there's been no discussion in any minutes about updates, and there's been no discussion of anything except for current activities. And the interesting part is, the county of Marquette has denied that this is a county program, yet it's run by some people that happen to be employees of the county. They said, "But it's not a county program. It's not a governmental function," so to speak. So, and the Meeting Act doesn't apply, they say. So please get a written report, and the county has a written report from 2016. You can start with that, and then add your own. And several thousand people have been trained, and professionals are being targeted for layman's trainings.
Time is up, Mr. Gallant.
That is the problem. And if we could get-
Thank you very much.
That'd be great.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else?
Frank Jeffaro, 350 East Ridge, Marquette, to speak on item six. These are my opinions. September 11, the resident advised we not remove the red light at 7th and Magnetic. You'd swear this light and the one at College have sensors that turn them yellow as cars approach to maximize our wait times. This board is prudent to evaluate the situation after the hospital moves and to install smart lights across town. To date, though, this board has still failed to consider the repurposing of the current hospital campus. Knowing the long-term use for this site is critical in evaluating whether to remove the traffic lights, by all means, get rid of them were feasible. Regarding the Flounder's condos, the architect did well to describe what ought to have appeared on the cover page. Neither Mr. Conley, the manager's assistant, nor I had a clue. The manager and the members who create our agendas are asked yet again to provide obviously needed information so the average person who happens upon the packet can decipher what's proposed. The architect disappointed us by neglecting to explain why the original plan to provide a smooth retail transition from lake to downtown fell by the wayside, like the grandiose plans for Lake Shore Site, the lie that entered me into this filthy world of politics back in 97. It's telling that the newspaper led the public to believe I opposed the founder's development when the record shows I'd asked for even higher density use of that parcel. Another season's passed without our use of Lighthouse Park, a process that was to have been well underway last February per the consultant. This board not only bought into all the above lies, but took ownership of them. Since the 1970s, we've lost most of an acre at Pitnik Rocks, yet these folks sit idle while more erodes. What's truly a sin is a board that keeps repeating its known and documented stupidity. Shame on you. September 11, Mr. Conley mentioned a real dark sky opportunity that lies a few miles north at Little Presque Isle. Actually, it's six miles northwest. The DNR charges us access, and not everyone owns a car or wants to deal with driving to see something we have a reasonable opportunity to enjoy within walking distance. Please expand the Dark Sky Initiative to McCarty's Cove by removing the utility lights along Lake Shore Boulevard in favor of shorter streetscape lighting that casts downward only. Mr. Conley seems to lose sight of the simple things that add to our quality of life, like his love of parking meters. September 11, after hearing me say how lovely the darkness of night is, surely to the agreement of the Astronomical Society and Dark Sky Advocates, Mr. Campana said, "The back end of the island is no place you want to be wandering around at night." I would. Well, I believe in safety first. He's our most closed-minded member and the most oblivious to opinions that differ from his. Why can he not see the beauty by day or by night? What's he so afraid of? A black bear? The boogeyman?
Anyone else? Anyone else wish to address the commission? See, none. We're going to close public comment. We're going to move to the consent agenda. Commissioners, do I have a motion? Commissioner Fraser?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended earlier.
Would there be a second? Commissioner Plard? All those in favor, please say yes.
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 Opposed? That carries, 7-0. Next, we move to unfinished business. We have two items under unfinished business tonight. First item is the contract award for BP 17-11 Solid Waste Collection Services, Curbside Residential. City Clerk, if we could have some background on that, please?
Thank you, sir. The current contract for solid waste collection services expires September 30, 2017. BP 17-11 Solid Waste Collection Services, Curbside Residential, which focused on weekly curbside garbage and recycling, rigids and fiber on alternating weeks, collection, was sent out to four regional vendors, and the bids were publicly displayed and noticed. Bids were opened May 25, 2017. A recommendation was made at the regular city commission meeting held on July 31, 2017, for the more flexible contract through waste management utilizing a system of bags and carts. The recommendation also supports the efforts of the Marquette County Solid Waste Management Authority Recycling Program. The city commission approved the recommendation on July 31, 2017, and authorized the city manager to negotiate a seven-year contract using bid alternates A, bags, and B, carts, for nighttime curbside residential solid waste collection services with Waste Management of Michigan Incorporated at the unit prices bid. The term of the contract will be October 1, 2017 through September 30, 2024. Background and changes to the solid waste request for bids on curbside service. The current contract for solid waste collection services expires on September 30, 2017. Alternates were requested for weekly bagged collection, status quo, and/or wheeled cart curbside collection of garbage and recycling, rigids and fiber on alternating weeks. Bids were requested for seven- and 10-year contract terms. Bid packages were sent out to four regional vendors, and the bids were publicly displayed and noticed. Three responses were received. One regional bid and two local bids were opened on May 25, 2017. The recommendation was for the more flexible contract utilizing a hybrid system of bags and carts. The recommendation also supports the efforts of the Marquette County Solid Waste Management Authority Recycling Program. The term of the contract will be October 1, 2017 through September 30, 2024. Solid waste contract modifications. The hauler agrees to provide green carts with green lids for garbage and green carts with yellow lids for recycling. All carts will be stamped with a serial number, the city logo, digital graphic provided by the city, and garbage or recycling clearly stamped on the lid. Both the city and the hauler agree to recycle using the dual-stream recycling program through the MCSWMA. If MCSWMA switches to single stream, both the city and the hauler agree to make the switch and continue to support the MCSWMA recycling program. If the MCSWMA begins to collect a tipping fee, the hauler may provide other cost-effective solutions. Both parties must agree to the changes. The hauler agrees to own and operate a transfer station within city limits. The hauler agrees to sell individual green bags through the transfer station. The hauler agrees to continue to operate the transfer station for a minimum of 25 hours open to the public per week. The hauler agrees to make a daily effort to keep Berge Avenue free of litter from the roundabout in front of the Duke Lifepoint Hospital to McClellan Avenue. The hauler agrees to make a nightly effort to ensure the collection stops are left clean, tidy, and free of any significant litter or debris before moving on to the next collection stop. Both the city and the hauler agree that recycling carts may be provided to bag system customers at a negotiated cost of $1.50 per month per cart. The service was unintended when the request for bids was sent out. The service has since been requested, and the hauler can provide the service. Fiscal effect. The proposed fiscal year 1718 solid waste budget is a balanced budget and reflects the new contract for solid waste. Because of this contract, residents will see a reduction in the solid waste fee for bag collection of $1.75 per unit per month, and a new service for cart collection is added based on the attached fee schedule. Recommendation: Approve the negotiated seven-year contract using bid alternates A, bags, and B, carts, for nighttime curbside residential solid waste collection services with Waste Management of Michigan Incorporated at the unit prices bid. Alternatives: Reject the contract and instruct further negotiation, or as determined by the city commission.
Thank you. Okay, we have two individuals who wanted to speak to this item. Mr. Verito, you want to go first?
I'm sure you even know I was the second one, but I'm not running the meeting. Frank Jeff Verito, these are my opinions. It appears the commission is conducting due diligence and seeing that our residents are afforded a choice of options at the most affordable rate. Most residents, including this one, won't take the time to read the fine details. Thus, it would be prudent for the commission to have someone clearly explain what our curbside options are and the logistics of each. Please provide us what we need to know to make the best choice. An effort actually was made on the cover sheet, I believe, and it might be a little bit clearer for the people at home and in the audience here if it was verbally told us in no uncertain terms, at least regarding curbside options. For example, where the price of a small and large garbage bag remain the same. Can those bags be placed on the curbside as they presently are? Is there a cost to replace a stolen bin? A customer of mine has had six bins stolen since the inception of this current program. There's also the mention of the site being left free of significant debris. How about windblown debris, or animal scattered debris, or bins that the plows tip over, where it might be unreasonable to expect to pay somebody to pick all of that up? The supplement reads that, quote, "The contract states the city is strongly considering a cart system, but has not yet made a commitment to do so." How can we award a contract without knowing such basic information as this? Again, I have no complaints on the current waste handling system or this award process. However, we've seen this board make too many decisions, usually on land-use items, without incorporating viable public concerns.
Thank you. Matt Luttenberger, 1406 Garfield Ave., here in Marquette. Thanks for bringing this up, and thank you, Kyle, for reading that whole explanation. It was a lot more informative than what I had come to understand from the last meeting. So thank you for updating all of the negotiation. That was vital. I do still create only one bag per month, however, so for this whole thing, I'm, I was wondering if there's a way for residents to opt out of these plans, but there isn't, so I get it. You know, this is one of those collective costs that we all have to share. And on that, I do, I think this is a good plan. I was curious whether or not we were going to have bags or carts, who provides the carts. Again, thank you for all the negotiation that took place. That was very helpful. I still wonder, though, if the supplier doesn't have an option to come back and say, "Oops, we made a mistake," or, "Oops, there are some problems in here." The fact that we have certain limitations based on where we hold our trash allows me to think of, what are our mechanisms for controlling smell, controlling vermin, controlling other elements? Do we have something where we can regenerate the methane and treat it as a heating or electricity supply for the operations there? Personally, 25 hours a week for me to haul my trash doesn't seem like a lot of time, and no offense, because 24 hours a week is when I'm working usually. So just being open when I'm not available doesn't allow me to throw out my trash. And Thursday nights, for some reason on my block, I just, I can't get there. So again, I can't choose when my trash gets picked up, and yet I'm paying for a service that I probably use once, and you folks might use four or five times. So in some way, thank you for making all the suggestions, or making all the contract negotiations. I still wonder, though, if there's a way that the least, I mean, I think I did my best when you say, "We put a cost on the green bags so you wouldn't create trash." I think I did that, and yet I'm still paying a lot more than what seems fair. And granted, this is the city of Marquette. We live here. It's $100 basically a month for a single person in a household to cover all the expenses and all of the electricity. As an average, it's going to go up or down, maybe by five or 10 bucks, but nobody's less than $75 a month here in Marquette. It's getting expensive, and I just would like to see more of an option presented in the future contracts. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Plard?
I move that we approve the negotiated seven-year contract with bid alternates A, bags, and B, carts, for nighttime curbside residential solid waste collection services with Waste Management of Michigan Incorporated at the unit prices bid.
Sir's support? Commissioner Baldini? Any comments? Commissioner Plard?
I'd just like to thank the city as well for negotiating, and thank Waste Management for negotiating in good faith. I think this is a good plan. It's not cheap to get rid of solid waste in any way, shape, or form. That's one of the things I think we all learned when Waste Management was here for their presentation. But I think it's a good plan, and people who do have, or just use the bags, we have, we preserve that. We want to make sure that we had that for folks, and people who like the carts, we wanted to make sure we preserved that as well. So I think we've done a pretty good job ourselves on that.
Thank you. Commissioner Baldini, anything?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think the points have been covered. We had a lengthy discussion. The community got very involved with us in helping to guide us as to what we did, and I'm glad we came up with the option, the two options for the public. The newspaper covered it also rather thoroughly. I think the, maybe this would be, it should be noted that the cost for bags is going to go down for collection, and that we- go down for collection, and that we provided the option of bags or carts, and that maybe the city manager might want to explain what's going to be included in this month's utility bills, just as an information item, seeing that people are watching on this one, so.
Thank you. City manager, did you wish to clarify something?
Sure. Going out, this month's utility bills will be the item that you see before you, the form. Basically, it will instruct city residents that unless they defer from the bag system to the cart system, they will automatically be on the bag system. So the default position will be the bag system like you were before unless you choose otherwise. If you so choose, then the form that'll be coming in your utility bill will be, it will be your responsibility to complete and return to us, and we will then move you to the cart system. It's rather simple. It will likely take at least two months to get everything going. We did not, and Waste Management chose not to preorder any carts because we were waiting to see how many, first of all, if the contract would be supported by the commission, and second of all, they need to get an idea of how many carts to order to have a proper amount. So we'll start that process after this meeting tonight. And one last point, Scott Cambenzi is here. He's the Director of Public Works that put this plan together, and I need to recognize him, too, for the effort he put into negotiating this contract and collecting all the details. It was quite an extensive piece of work, so thank you.
Commissioner Frazier, you had a question?
Thank you, Mike. I think you basically answered all my questions. I was wondering about the bagged cart system swap, because I was in favor of the carts. Glad you worked out something where everybody's going to have an option to switch. I know a couple of people called me and asked, what are we switching, if we want to switch? Because a couple of people I've talked to said they couldn't, they had a garbage night, they couldn't find bags anywhere in town. They're rushing around, I like to find them with small bags, and like some people said they only use one bag a month. These people are a big family. They use a lot of...I use at least two or three a week for myself, and their family uses quite a few, so, you know, they just, they didn't want to know the options. So that's good, you're...they're going to have the process to switch on the utility bills. Thank you for the information.
Commissioner Conley?
Couple of questions first. Will the public have a chance to look at the carts? Because I don't know, a 48 from a 65 from a 96, I don't know what I'm going to need. Can I go someplace at the service center and look at it and measure it up and figure out what I want?
Sure, we can make that available.
And for, not just me, the commissioner, but for everybody in the public?
Right, yeah.
And you'll announce or publicize the availability of that? Will that be at City Hall here, like in the city manager's office or something like that?
That'll be up to the city manager, I guess, but we'd be happy to make them available at the service center.
I'm considering amending the motion, but... Second question is, I was looking through all the contract and the request for bids and all that, and I didn't see it specified until I picked up this sheet that was on our desk today, the option sheet. I want to make certain that people who want to go totally without carts have the ability to use the tubs or, I think it said, any hard-walled plastic container. Can they use that for recycling if they just don't have room for a cart?
Yeah, you'll be able to continue on if the system is exactly as you're using it right now with any hard-wall container for the recycling and then just the green bags.
And I had a question for the attorney. I didn't see that specifically addressed in our contract with Waste Management that any container will be accepted for recycling.
I don't remember if it was in it or not. If you say it wasn't, it probably wasn't, but I think it's more of a policy the city can handle that internally.
You don't think we're going to have it out with Waste Management three years from now when they say, no, these tubs are no good? We're not going to take them anymore. Look at our contract.
No, I don't think so.
Because sometimes verbal agreements are worth the paper they're written on.
Well, it's a internal thing with the city. I don't see that as a problem at all.
Okay, all right. Well, I'm in support of this because this gives every resident the option, and there are some residences that just either don't want to or can't handle carts. Other people say, you know, bring the carts on, this is great. It will...the crows in the neighborhood are going to object to the cart system, though. But so I'm in favor of it. We've gone through this a lot. We had a work session, I believe it was in May. We had a lengthy discussion at our city commission meeting here in July, and this is a product of those two discussions. And as long as residents can go take a look and see what they're...because it's for a full year. If you get a 96-gallon cart and say, oh, that won't even fit through the door. But so anyway, I'm going to be supporting this.
Commissioner Baldini?
I just want to clarify something. One of the speakers indicated that he was paying $100. I think he meant $100 for water, sewer, everything collectively, but I think it...I just want to make sure people don't think that waste, this is going to cost $100 a month for this provision. Okay? Clarification on that.
I agree. That was the impression I got.
Yeah, okay.
Total utilities. I have a question for Mr. Cambenzi. How are they going to distribute these carts? Do people go pick them up, or will they be delivered to the house?
Nope, they'll be delivered to your front door.
Great, thank you. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Carry 7-0. Our second item of unfinished business is a Nocamanon Trails Network Office Lease Agreement. City clerk, could we have the background, please?
Thank you, sir. The Nocamanon Trails Network Council, NTN, has requested the city commission consider a lease agreement for office space at Lakeview Arena. Staff has worked with the city attorney and NTN to draft a standard lease agreement which provides for the terms and conditions of the request. The monthly lease payment shall be $432. The term of the lease is three years. The proposed lease agreement was introduced at the commission's September 11, 2017 meeting and approved as recommended to move the lease agreement forward to the September 25, 2017 meeting. Fiscal Effect: The Lakeview Arena Fund will receive $5,184 in revenue for fiscal year 2018. Recommendation: Approve the three-year lease agreement with the Nocamanon Trails Network Council for office space at Lakeview Arena and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign it. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Do we have a motion for this item? Commissioner Plard?
I move that we approve the three-year lease agreement with Nocamanon Trails Network Council for office space at Lakeview Arena and authorize the mayor and the clerk to sign it.
Would there be any support? Commissioner Reynolds?
Second.
Any discussion? Commissioner Plard?
Just to say that this is an ongoing relationship with the Nocamanon Network Council, and I'm happy to see it.
Commissioner Reynolds, anything?
Nope.
See no further discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Next, we come to new business. We have six items under new business tonight. The first item is the supervisor's labor agreement. City clerk, could we have the background, please?
Thank you, sir. The city of Marquette has reached a new four-year agreement with the supervisory employees chapter of Ask Me Local 1825. The bargaining unit ratified the agreement on September 5. The major issues during negotiations were compliance with PA 349 of 2012, the Freedom to Work Act, wages, increased contributions to the pension plan, and the establishment of a MERS healthcare savings program for bargaining unit members. The parties have agreed to change contract language to comply with Michigan's freedom to work legislation, increase the employee's contribution to the pension plan from 5% to 6%, ensure sustainability of the pension plan by increased employer contributions, offer a competitive wage and health insurance package, a $30 per year per employee increase to the uniform allowance, an increase of an additional three hours of on-call pay for holidays, and the establishment of an employee-funded MERS healthcare savings program for post-employment medical expenses. To establish the MERS healthcare savings program, the city commission will also need to adopt the attached resolution and agreement with an effective date of October 1, 2017. The city's bargaining team commends the supervisory unit of Ask Me for their willingness to work with us on these issues to negotiate an agreement that is fair to the employees and the city. Fiscal Effect: October 1, 2017, 2% equal to $19,523. October 1 of 2018, 2% equal to $18,707. October 1, 2019, 2% equal to $19,081. And October 1, 2020, 2% equal to $19,462, making a total of $76,773. The first year includes the addition of 33 hours of holiday on-call pay. Subsequent years reflect the 2% increase in holiday on-call pay only. Funds to pay for the first year's cost will come from statutory revenue sharing. There is no additional cost to the city for the establishment of the MERS healthcare savings program. Recommendation: Approve the supervisory employees' labor agreement effective October 1, 2017 through September 30, 2021. Adopt the MERS healthcare savings program resolution and participation agreement and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign both agreements. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Baldini?
I move that we approve the supervisory employees' labor agreement effective October 1, 2017 through September 30, 2021. Adopt a MERS healthcare savings program resolution and participation agreement and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign both agreements.
Do we have support? Commissioner Frazier?
Support.
Any comment?
Just that this is, we've known as a commission, that this has been in the works because the manager's kept us advised that there's a collective bargaining process going on. And so this is the agreement they've reached, and I think it's an equitable one and a fair one in the...to deal with what the state has given us and our current economic times, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Frazier, anything? Commissioner Plard?
I do want to thank the union and the bargaining people on both sides of the table for bargaining in good faith. I think this is a good contract as well, and the union really, really worked with us on this, and I appreciate that a lot.
Thank you. Because this involves a resolution, we're going to need a roll call vote. City clerk, please.
Commissioner Cambenzi?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Commissioner Plard?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Baldini?
Yes.
Mayor Campana?
Yes. That carries 7-0. Next, we move to our next item, which is the Marquette Public Art Policy. City clerk, could we have that background, please?
Thank you, sir. At its April 11, 2016 regular meeting, the city commission made appointments to the Public Art Task Force. The task force was created with an objective to define and address both existing and future public art in the city. After over a year of meeting as a group, presenting to the city commission and further reviewing the commission's interests, received at a final work session, a final proposed policy was prepared and attached for city commission consideration. The policy establishes a Marquette Public Art Commission as the oversight body of the policy and defines a public, defines a public art fund established by the city. Fiscal Effect: Per the policy, each fiscal year, the city commission will appropriate from the city's general fund to the public art fund the amount of $30,000, which will be adjusted each year by the state property tax inflation rate multiplier then in effect, or 5%, whichever is less. The funds will be appropriated beginning with fiscal year 2018. Recommendation: Approve the attached Marquette Public Art Policy and establish the Marquette Public Art Commission and Public Art Fund as defined in the policy. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Commissioner Conley?
I move that we approve the attached Marquette Public Art Policy and establish the Marquette Public Art Commission and Public Art Fund as defined in the policy.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Reynolds?
Second.
Comments? Commissioner Conley, any?
I had the honor of being the city commission representative on the Public Art Task Force, and it's been a hard-working group, very enjoyable, and taught me the value of public art, and I think the rest of us will appreciate it. Public art is here. We have the Father Marquette statue. Soon we'll have the Phil Nemezto art in the pocket park. Another piece just went in about two weeks ago. There are some lights on the, or over the steps of the Savings Bank Building, which is public art in itself, that, and I would encourage people to go by and go past there and take a look up and took it, take a look at those bronze lights. But we have public art. We're just having a formal policy to establish it and then funding it. It makes our community stronger. It makes us more attractive to our guests and to our residents. It helps us grow economically. So this is an investment and not an expense.
Commissioner Reynolds, anything?
Just that we've had quite a few meetings about public art, and I've talked to a few people in town about this policy, and most people enjoy the fact that it's a policy instead of an ordinance, and also enjoy the fact that we're going to be contributing more money to public art in five. When I first started on the commission, we were downstairs in 103, and I added public art to our 10-year plan. It wasn't on there, and I remember Bill Vida thinking I was out of my mind adding it on there, but I remember Fred Stonehouse made me want to keep going on it and thinking it's something we need to have in Marquette. So I'm glad that right now we are passing this, and it's going to be going forward.
Okay. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? That carries 7-0. Our next new business item of the evening is the city attorney evaluation. City clerk, background, please.
Thank you, sir. The city charter requires an annual performance evaluation of the city attorney. In August, the city commission directed the mayor to appoint three commissioners to an evaluation subcommittee. The subcommittee consisted of Mayor Campana, Mayor Pro Tem Baldini, and Commissioner Plard. The overall evaluation was very positive. The city attorney has successfully met all the city charter requirements for his position. No increase in compensation was considered because the attorney is paid on a retainer basis, and the amount of his compensation for legal services is approved as part of the annual budget process. Fiscal Effect: None by this action. Recommendation: Approve the city attorney's annual performance evaluation. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Commissioner Frazier?
I said we approve the city attorney's annual performance evaluation.
Would there be a second? Commissioner Conley?
Second.
Discussion, any? Commissioner Frazier?
Ron does quite a bit of work for us, so I guess we can approve his lot of work he does for us.
Thank you. Commissioner Conley?
I want to thank Ron for his hard work. We've put him through the wringer the last couple of years. I think it was more than he bargained for, but we sure appreciate his efforts, and the city has grown because of those efforts, and thank you.
Commissioner Plard?
I also want to thank you, Ron. You're always available for questions. You haven't missed one yet, and some of them have been pretty convoluted in some ways, but you find a way to unravel them, and I for one appreciate very much that you're available and what you do for the commission and the city.
I would like to say that my feelings, the city attorney was evaluated by all the commissioners on whether or not, whether or not he met the seven duty areas as defined in our city charter. I'm pleased to say that Mr. Keefe received 100% positive response from the commissioners, all the commissioners, which tells us that we are very satisfied with the work that he is doing for the city. This is especially notable considering the enormous amount of legal responsibility arising from the building construction, road development, and contract negotiations that have occurred during this past year. We truly thank Mr. Keefe for his dedicated work for the city. See no further discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed? That passes 7-0. Our next business item of the evening is the city manager evaluation. If we could have the background, city clerk, please.
Thank you, sir. The city charter requires an annual performance evaluation of the city manager. In August, the city commission authorized the mayor to appoint a subcommittee consisting of the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Baldini, and of the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Baldini, and Commissioner Plord to the evaluation committee. The subcommittee met to review the city manager's performance and compensation earlier this month. The overall evaluation was very positive. The manager has successfully met all the city charter requirements for his position, and the majority of the city commissioners awarded him the highest rating in all other performance categories. Commissioner comments and suggestions have been provided to the city manager for further improvement. In reviewing compensation, the committee took into account commissioners' recommendations, comparable positions in other municipalities, and budgetary constraints. The committee thinks the 2% increase is appropriate based upon these considerations. For his work on the new municipal service center, the new hospital, Clark Park, the lighthouse property, the energy efficiency improvements at various city facilities, and other projects, the committee also recommends a $2,500 performance bonus effective October 1, 2017. In addition, the committee recommends that the term of the city manager's contract be extended for one year to October of 2020. Fiscal effect: The recommended 2% increase and $2,500 bonus is within the fiscal year 2017-18 budget, and will bring the city manager's base salary to $119,646 a year. Recommendation: Approve the evaluation subcommittee's recommendation to increase the city manager's salary from $117,300 to $119,646, award a discretionary performance bonus of $2,500, and extend the term of the manager's contract by one year to October 18, 2020. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Commissioner Baldini?
I move we approve the evaluation subcommittee recommendation to increase the city manager's salary from $117,300 to $119,646, award a discretionary performance bonus of $2,500, and extend the term of the manager's contract by one year to October 18, 2020.
Is there a second? Commissioner Conley?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I, I, I think, your honor, it, Assistant Clerk read some of the things. It's been a very, very busy year, and, and I think the reason we are where we are, maybe some people would be critical of that, but, but I, I do think the reason things are moving forward is because the city manager has, has moved them forward, and he has worked with the staff. He, we have a good, he has a good rapport with, with them, and by working with them and working with the community leaders also, it, it has been a very, very busy couple of years, and this year has been much more so, and next year is probably gonna continue. So I think this is well-deserved, and, and he had very positive ratings of which you might review, I'm quite sure, so thank you.
Commissioner Conley?
I'd like to commend the city manager and, and thank him for his efforts. I don't think the city has ever asked a city manager for more than we have of you in the last two years that you've been our official city manager. It's certainly been a busy time, and, and I know you, you, you had 40 hours a week, that's just getting started, that you're, you're on the job seven days and even on vacation. So your, your efforts are tireless, and your, your efforts are appreciated. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Just wanna echo Commissioner Conley's comments. Mike is always readily available. I will message him at 8 o'clock at night, and I normally get a response at any time. And I also thank the committee. I think you guys did a good job with going down to what, I know that Mike doesn't want a large raise, and he wants to stay with, you know, what everybody else gets, so I think that this is a good compromise to that effect.
Commissioner Frazier?
Mike has done a great job. I agree with everybody. He's a great city manager, putting in traffic circles on every street in town. I mean, he, he just loves traffic circles, it's just his new thing. He just loves traffic circles. I think that's, the construction industry probably thanks you for that, Mike, you know, all the work you've given them. The public in their hand probably doesn't like you because you're shoving traffic every different direction. You can't get from one end of town to the other without hitting some of the construction. Feel sorry for our, our police chief, because those guys are trained to patrol. They can't patrol because they have to go around town instead of just going through town, you know? But maybe you should share your bonus maybe with the, with the mayor for helping out with all these projects or something, maybe, or maybe, but, you know, I think you're great and you're well with it.
Well, I think that the people should know that the city manager is evaluated on a rather extensive format by the city commissioners. There's both a quantitative and qualitative evaluation done on his work performance. This past year may have been the most difficult year in history to manage the city of Marquette. Consider all the new building construction, roads, infrastructure, roundabouts, property acquisitions, the $28 million Johnson Controls project that the city manager had to coordinate and keep moving forward. The city manager's evaluation came back with very, very positive comments from the commissioners. He scored high in meeting his charter requirements, and he received high marks for his job performance. We are pleased with his leadership and confident that he will continue to keep the city moving forward in a positive manner. We are lucky and grateful to have him for our city manager. He came in at a most difficult time. These last two years, this year, next year are gonna be very, very difficult. Seeing no further comments, we're gonna vote. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed? Our next item is the budget adjustment fiscal year 2017 year-end. City Clerk, please.
Thank you, sir. According to state and local laws, the city should complete each fiscal year with a budget in which expenditure amounts do not exceed budgeted amounts. The attached schedule reflects the various activities which were not incorporated in the original adopted budget for fiscal year 2017. Approval of this adjustment will help ensure the city stays in compliance with budget rules and regulations. Fiscal effect: Per the attached schedule. Recommendation: Approve the year-end budget adjustment for fiscal year 2017 as presented. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
This could be a regular, a real complex issue if you read too far into it. I didn't, I don't want to blindside our chief financial officer, but does he care to enlighten us on this or let it go? Just a little layman's language, if you would.
The answer is no. Now, this is something that probably every city does since the creation of governmental accounting. It's really just a housekeeping chore. This is the last meeting before the, the end of our fiscal year, which ends September 30, and we just need to make sure our budget complies with all the various regulations we have to deal with. So it's really nothing major. There's nothing unexpected. It's just that the biggest part is carrying over projects from the previous fiscal year to this fiscal year. The biggest one was the Service Center project, but there were also some street projects that we had to carry forward because they weren't completed. Then we have throughout the year, there are some items that occur that have required budget adjustments throughout the year. For example, the, the tribal money that we receive for other organizations. The city acts as a pass-through, so we do have to record that as a revenue and an expense, and we just never know how much that is gonna be each year, so we just wait until the end of the fiscal year to, to do that amount. And then we had a couple of bond refundings, which is actually good news. It's gonna save the city quite a bit of money over the future life of the bonds, but because of the accounting rules, we have to record those a special way, and that requires a budget adjustment, too. And that's really the gist of it. There's, like I said, nothing to be alarmed about. If there were, you wouldn't see me standing here before you right now, so I don't know if you have any specific questions.
Probably not. If we do, we'll call you back up. Thank you. Thank you for that explanation. Okay, we do need a motion. Commissioner Cambenzi?
I have a question first. Is our fiscal year tied to our charter, or is that?
It is. I asked if our fiscal year was tied to the charter.
If not, I was gonna ask if we could change it.
Okay, still looking for a motion. Commissioner Reynolds?
I move that we approve the year-end budget adjustment for fiscal year 2017 as presented.
Is there a second? Commissioner Conley?
Support.
Comments, any? Commissioner Reynolds?
None.
Commissioner Conley?
None.
All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed? That passes 7-0. Our last new business item of the evening is a wastewater treatment plant emergency digester cleaning. City Clerk, background, please.
Thank you, sir. The Marquette City Commission approved a contract with KBK Services, Inc. of Ashland, Wisconsin, at the August 28, 2017 commission meeting for the repair of digester gas lines. Per the scope of work, it is the city's responsibility to provide a completely empty digester. Staff was unable to remove approximately 120,000 gallons of material due to the high solids content. The Director of Public Works and Utilities contacted a company currently doing work in the Upper Peninsula that specializes in this type of work. The contractor then visited the plant and provided a proposal to empty the digester. The timing of this cleaning project is critical, as the contractor is only in the area through September 22 of 2017. Therefore, this expense cannot be approved by the City Commission prior to the work being completed. Per the City Code, Section 3.05, Emergency Purchases, "In case of emergency, any department head with the approval of the manager may purchase directly any supplies, materials, or equipment, the immediate procurement of which is necessary to the continuation of the work of the department. Such purchases and the emergency causing them shall be reported in detail to the purchasing agent within a week from the time when made, and such reports shall be filed by the purchasing agent as a permanent record." Fiscal effect: Sufficient funds are available in the Marquette area wastewater treatment facility professional and contractual budget. Recommendation: Approve the expenditure to FSO management of O'Conno Falls, Wisconsin in the amount of $7,000 with a contingency of 15% for a total of $8,050. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Would someone care to make a motion? Commissioner?
I'll make a motion.
Baldini?
I would move that we approve the expenditure to FSO management of O'Conno Falls, Wisconsin in the amount of $9,321.25.
Thank you. Is there support? Commissioner Reynolds?
Second.
Any discussion? Commissioner Baldini?
Well, let me explain. If you, originally, the, the city manager had, and the clerk read the emergency provision. Just prior to this meeting, the city manager informed us that he had received a hard figure from the company, and that's why we moved it from the consent agreement to actually put in the exact amount of $9,321.25, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Reynolds, anything?
Nothing.
Seeing no further discussion, we'll vote on this. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed? That carries 7-0. Next, we come to our last public comment of the evening. Again, a chance for citizens to address the commission. I'm gonna open public comment. You have three minutes. Name, address, city or township.
James Gallant, Marquette County Suicide Prevention Coalition, 538 Yama Road, Scandia. I would like to state again, I would ask you to please consider requesting a written report on suicide prevention activities, and that you would, by motion, and approve that here, because I've, I've seen this many times where the county did that, and they said, "Could you give us a report?", and then it doesn't have the parameters. It comes back, it's pretty skimpy. It doesn't say anything what you actually, to say what you actually want in that, the information. Like I said, a copy of the approved county plan, the minutes of the Suicide Prevention Alliance, current members, future plans to update, whatever else you folks would like to know, that you actually request that report so that you know what's gonna be in it. You'll get it back, and it'll be, and the Peter White Library Board actually voted to request the county plan, or the county report that they did in 2016, and they voted to approve the request that, and then it came back in the next meeting, and they said, well, that they apparently got the legal opinion of a Michigan Municipal League that said that they should not FOIA another governmental agency, and they never did it. They voted to do it, though, so it was in direct contradiction to the vote of the board. And Scott Urbish is very easygoing on this. He has it right in his office. You don't have to FOIA it. He just said, he gave me a copy, just go pick it up at the clerk's office, and he's, they're concerned about suicide. And so to have that report and to actually name what you want, and actually, there's significant increased risk of suicide and the violation of legal rights of people with developmental disabilities. People with autism or, you know, muscular dystrophy, whatnot, have a significant higher risk, and this could maybe go on the city attorney's performance evaluation for next year, that there is a federal law called Developmental Disabilities Act of 2000 that requires that people with developmental disabilities shall be provided the opportunities and supports to live their life free of violations of their legal and human rights. So I would ask you to consider creating a standard operating procedure for the police department, fire department, any appropriate employees of the city that come in contact with people with developmental disabilities, that they would assess their legal rights and ensure that they're not being violated, and to provide the supports that they will not be continued violations. And this is what I'm working on, is people with custody and parenting time orders, child support, and whatnot, that if they have a disability, developmental disability, that they should be provided the opportunities and officially help them to get that. And also, I've asked this a couple of times before about the, please request the Prescott Advisory Committee to evaluate the current fire hazard that's being created by the excess litter of the, and falling trees at Prescott Park, and especially the White Birch Park that's everywhere down there. Lightning strike, cigarette out the window, and we could lose that park. And now would be a good time to get that cleaned up, and maybe we get the Boy Scouts to volunteer and whatnot, and we get that cleaned up.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Frank Chaverto, "These are my opinions. Another new bench has appeared along the most natural segment of McCarty's Cove without the requested public opportunity. Sadly, I am in the minority on benches, but only ask our residents and visitors to discern how this detracts from our natural experience. Each time cement is poured or some new amenity appears, the visual quality is tarnished, and the terrain surrounding the so-called improvement becomes trampled. Regarding the wastewater plant, Mr. Frazier mentioned the lots of concrete used in the renovation, and he's made other references to concrete in the past. He'd probably do up the whole town in concrete if given the okay. He also called the Chair Dave again. The Chair, after being asked numerous times with examples cited, has apparently remained too afraid to tell us what the criterion is for who can use and who can't use first names. Over a week after a resident warned this board about the lack of signage on Cleveland where it crosses the bike trail, there was still no warning. Even worse, the crosswalks at our main downtown intersections are almost weathered away. The two biggest intersections in town, aside from McClellan, which is another safety blemish on this board, after all the close calls and public concern. Why must we remind this board of something so blatantly obvious as having our main side, our crosswalks striped? Years ago, a member proposed signage to make drivers aware of pedestrians, but nothing was done. These are yet further indications of this board's incognizance of a walkable city. Our members are too busy catering to the automobile. September 11, not one citizen spoke to the budget hearing, nor did many if any attend the work sessions. Why then on August 28 did Mr. Plord single me out for not attending when none of my comments pertained to budgetary items? I'm not expected to attend the budget meetings more than anyone else despite my comments. Mr. Plord also thanked me again. I'm not sure what for. He painted me as someone who thinks he, meaning I, can see into the future. Indeed, I have documented my ability to see into the future, not because I have psychic powers, but because I've studied urban growth since college and its implications across dozens of communities. A good example of seeing into the future were my comments on our homeless crisis. My ideas would eliminate the freeloaders who come here solely for handouts. You heard me recommend giving them several days of food and showers, very compassionate, but then comes the time to either have lined-up job prospects, to move on, or to return where they came from. I worked myself half to death to earn the money to move here at a fairly young age, something I'll never com- something I'll never complain about or regret because it's been so well worth the sacrifice. But you were warned about this imminent homeless problem years ago, yet continued to exacerbate it through your inaction. So, Mr. Plord has a point when he suggests I can see into the future, and has dared to find anything in the public record to refute that assertion.
Anyone else? Would anyone else wish to address the commission? Seeing none, we're going to close public comment. We're going to move to comments from the commission, we'll start with Commissioner Conley.
I'd like to thank my fellow commissioners, the city manager and staff, for their support of public art, and helping to bring this policy to the commission and enacting it.
Commissioner Plord?
Well, it's very interesting, Mr. Verito, that you agree that you can see into the future, I'm curious as to how you acquired that, but I'll take your word for it. You've already proven that you know fools better than anyone else, and we all know what that takes. I'm constantly impressed, as well, at how versed you are in stupidity, and you, I'm sure you will continue to impress me further. Thank you so much for your comments, I will say one thing, at least tonight, again, when it comes to waste management, you gave us something that was worthwhile at the podium, a few decent questions to ask. Tonight wasn't a complete waste. I want to thank the city manager, again, city manager Mike Angeli, as the mayor and the mayor pro tem have mentioned, he's been busy, a lot of things have happened. One of the things that, among the many things that city manager Mike Angeli does so well, is that he works well with the city departments, and I do appreciate that very, very much. And the other thing he does very well is keep us informed at, as to what he's doing, and what the city departments are doing, and what's going on, and helps us to make informative decisions on what we are doing, so I appreciate that. Again, city attorney Ron Keef, same thing, thank you so much for being available as you are, and I want to thank the commissioners as well, because we all were involved in this, and everybody did due diligence on the evaluations, so, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Commissioner Reynolds?
Nothing this evening.
Commissioner, Mayor Pro Tem Baldini?
Thank you, Your Honor, a couple of things, one, it was a spectacular weekend in the city, traffic was unbelievable, and it was northern's homecoming, and it was great to have summer in September this year. Something else, we're going to do leave pickup, the announcement was in the Mining Journal, and I think also included in our utility bill as to when they'll pick up the trash. Also wanted to mention that we had a very informative work session at the Lighthouse property, with the commission, and with our consultants to talk about the property. It has great potential, but it's not something that's going to happen in the next two years. It's going to take years for us to get the money to do it, to put it together, and when we do, I think it's just going to be a spectacular addition to this community, and how we're going to handle those venues, and how they're going to work in with the rest of the waterfront that we own. Liked to also compliment, both thank the city manager and the city attorney, the city attorney is always available when we call him, if he's not on vacation, which he's been doing lately, but, because the city manager reminds us of that, that he's always taking time off. But, no, he is, he's available for us for questions, and we appreciate that, and he's had a tremendous amount of contract work, of all the agreements, and monitoring them, and keeping on top of them. And the city manager has done a great job of working, networking in the community, responding in a timely fashion to the many questions that we come up with, and, because we get asked, and he responds, and tells us what's going on and how he can help, so, I want to thank him, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Frazier?
Thanks for the great, I'm from Baldini, I missed the work session, but I did read the stuff in the Lighthouse property, they're taking, possible taking down the old fencing, making some people happy, the old fences around the Laissez-Lez property, they were talking about possibly taking that down, you know, just to improve the look at the lands, like that's one good thing, and some other stuff they're working on, moving stuff around and cleaning stuff up, it's a great, it's a great concept. There's, you know, concrete, yes, the wastewater plant has a little bit of concrete, I was involved, my company was involved, but that was before I was involved, the city, I lived in a township, and it's a great, great facility, and, yes, I'd love to have concrete all over the city, but blocked up rules. But, you know, it's just, I joke with the city management all the time, concrete lasts longer blocked up, but blocked up's cheaper, I love joking with them on that, and, but I'm not going to push you the way, whatever the city does, that's up to them, and that's the way the city and the state works. I've been to other states, they have concrete all over, in Michigan, it's the opposite, blocked up all over, just the way it works, not the city decision, it's the state decision. As far as the person accused me of, you know, helping, our former mayor, who's, you know, works at BLP, it wasn't his decision to do the extra power, it was the manager at the time, their decision, and I voted for it, I was one of the people to vote because I did a lot of research on it, this person that accused me of stuff, he hasn't mentioned that he's in the, he likes alternative energy, which is great, but, and when I studied this to vote for it, I researched, and there's the places that, with the most windmills is overseas, but they also have the biggest coal supplier in the world, they have the most, they have a lot of windmills to help supply energy, but they also have a lot of, they have the biggest supply of coal manufacturing for backup for everything, that's how they get the energy, you know, so, it's just one other thing he seems to leave out, but, it's also taught us how to be more efficient, with, you know, every business with their houses, that's taught me to turn the lights off, put LED lights in, and I didn't want to vote for it, it costs, the companies are, the company, my work off, two off to the side, and the company I work for both use a lot of energy all summer, and the guy that runs BLP is on the board now, he runs important buildings, he has a lot of energy, he spends, so, it wasn't good for him to make decisions either, plus, we all live in the city, we all have to pay the bills, it's one more thing we have to do, and, I think it's just we have, we have to work, and we'll learn to live with criticism, and city manager does a pretty good job, and, you know, our city mayor said something about our last meeting, we traded one up, I should bring a building, you know, they built one, we built one, they built two, so we should have one up them, we had to one up them by building like six or seven, not, you know, we could easily build like one more, we don't have to redo them by having six or seven, you know, I know you just let the draping circles, but...
Thank you. Commissioner Cam Bensy?
Well, I'm going to keep my comments short, I finally got the bug that's been going around for the last month, so I didn't escape it. I'd just like to thank our city attorney and city manager as well, for all the work they've done this year, and also our supervisors, who settled their agreement for this next year. It's great to see. My only comment is, I was fortunate to be at the MML conferences past week, and it was in Holland where they just built a brand-new energy center, and it reminded me of Marquette's in a way. However, they have a lot of public-private partnerships in which they purchase energy from some windmills nearby, creating kind of a more diverse, I guess, energy center that has kept their costs to the consumers lower, so, as we go forward, I know, last week I missed our previous city commission meeting where Mr. Tourville was here to update us on the Board of Light and Power, but I think it would be worth our while to kind of look at what Holland has done, and what they're doing, especially with those public-private partnerships, because I think it could be a win-win for the city and certainly the ratepayers.
Thank you. I, too, was fortunate to be able to attend the MML, which is Michigan Municipal League, it was in Holland, and Commissioner Cam Bensy, Commissioner Frazier, and myself were able to be there. This is a semi, every six months, meetings in different cities, or in Lansing. It's an opportunity for city leaders to get together with other city leaders throughout the state, and there's, we're given presentations, we have discussions, there's informational tours, and Holland, Michigan is just an outstanding city, what they are doing with their city, it's very much like Marquette, it's a city of about thirty-five thousand, but their tax base is a whole lot bigger than ours, consequently, they're doing more. But, a very progressive city, they've got, you know, old downtown, but they've saved the buildings, they've remodeled, they fix them up, they maintain them, it's a lovely city, if you ever get the opportunity to, think, if you're going to be in that area, you know, I would visit the city, it's just an outstanding city, it's located on a huge lake that empties right into Lake Michigan, so, they've got a lot going for themselves, we were very pleased with the meeting there. I would like to correct Mr. Verito, I get tired of hearing him say Founder, Flounder's Landing. That development on the bottom of Berega Avenue, East Berega, is called Founder's Landing, after the people who came to Marquette, Founder's Landing. Those people who are developing it are to be commended, they're doing a lot for the city of Marquette, they're going to have a nice complex there, it's going to look good for the community, there's going to provide a lot of employment, so, Founder's Landing. I, you know, don't, don't let yourself, don't put yourself out there as not knowing how to pronounce it, that doesn't make you look good. City manager, do you have anything?
Yes, briefly, just thank you all for your support and your kind words, the job has been a challenge, but it's been fun, but, the truth is, I couldn't do it without the staff that I have here, and there's five of them here tonight, one, two, three, four, five, yep, and they didn't have to be here, so they must think there's a pay raise or something coming on, so, Blake, two, six, yeah.
I'm lucky to have a job.
Yeah, Blake's lucky to have a job. And I think the city attorney would like to comment as well.
I, too, wanted to thank the commission for those very kind words. It's really easy to want to do your best when you like what you're doing, and as Mike said, we have one of the best staffs that probably I've ever worked with, they're bright, and they're committed to the city and making it better, and they're very focused on what they do, so, that makes it easy, and of course, working with Mike is added benefit, there are times, I suppose, we might disagree, but I also like working with the commission, and thank you for those words.
Thank you. We are adjourned.